Good evening. This is JP Krasinski and this is the Property Committee of the East Hampton City Council. At 6:00 PM on February 1st, all members are present. We also have sometime referred to as Councillor Bag, it's City Planner Bag. And I see a member of Mass Development, our representative of Mass Development, Claire O'Neill. I don't see anyone else in the audience at this time. There looks like Ben Murphy is joining us. Excellent. Good. Jeff, you were right. They might be joining us and they did. We have a meeting conducted via Zoom under the emergency orders, executive order of Governor Baker. The meeting is being held remotely. All members are present and will vote by voice vote in the affirmative or negative. And those votes will be recorded and reported in minutes. We have, I believe, minutes that were submitted for the meeting of January 10, 2022. And I appreciate that Councillor Zarrett for being diligent in getting those in by the next meeting. So appreciate that. I have looked over the minutes and don't have any questions. If we're prepared to vote, I would call for a motion at this time.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a, any further discussion? No. So, all in favor? Councillor Zarrett?
Yes.
The Councillor Gomans?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Aye.
Three to zero. Those minutes will be loaded up. I'll send them over to Barb in their current fashion. At this time, we have public speak and I don't see anyone else, but just in case there is, this is being offered. No hands. Onto the order of business for the day. We are very pleased to say that we're rounding the corner. I guess to use an analogy, heading down the home stretch toward having the new school be fully opened and anticipating that the school department will be releasing the buildings, Center, Pepin and Maple. So we have before us the responsibility of deciding what the city will want to do with it. And Planner Bag has asked that we consider the possibility of having professional help in doing an analysis of the sites and the locations. I presume those might include economic analyses. They might include feasibility studies of the various properties. But I look forward to Jeff, maybe if you could give us a quick synopsis unless the councillors have any other questions at this time. Proceed.
Thank you. Councillor Krasinski, that was a good introduction. I appreciate that. I'm here with Claire O'Neill and Ben Murphy from Mass Development. So I think they're here to answer questions about the agreement and some of the scope of services. But I think the way I would start to summarize this is that in the simplest form, this request is really the city council, we're asking the city council to authorize the mayor to enter into this memorandum of agreement. So that's, that the simplest part of the request is that's what's happening. And because it has to do with real property, that's been our pattern. And so for the, before the mayor can enter into this contract, because it has to do with real property, city council must authorize the mayor to, to enter into the agreement. So you know, at the end of the day, that's what's happening. But I, you know, fully understand that this is kind of a, a big, there's a big, there's a larger project. And there's information that, you know, hasn't, you know, there's a lot of information to catch people up on. So a lot of the work that has done, had been done so far. So I think there's a longer kind of just discussion about where we are in the process and what we're going to do before we get to the end of the day, which is we have, we have this agreement that we want to enter into. So to kind of start with the agreement, we are glad and very happy and thankful to be potentially partnering with Mass Development. We have a pretty, we have a pretty specific scope of services for what Mass Development will help the city with. And it was all included in the packet. But it really boils down to getting some land survey work done at each of the three school properties. You know, we, they've been purpose built for schools. They're over 100 years old and we have no record of where the property boundaries are. We don't have like the survey with the, showing where the buildings are located or the parking lots or trees or anything. So that's a really big part of the project is to get just existing conditions survey of the properties. The other part of that is to evaluate some of the underground infrastructure that's on the property and adjacent and sort of in the neighborhoods around it. We don't have detailed information about the sewer, the condition of the sewers underground and things like that. So the underground is difficult to assess. So part of the project would be to, to evaluate. I guess it would be more to inventory that. And we are also going to do some survey work of the streets. And so it sounds like stuff we would have, but we don't have a lot of data on the areas around the school. So we need to know where the city's right of way is. We would need to know where the sidewalks are. All to prepare us for the future kind of redevelopment of these, because we can't really, if you envision, let's say we need to add a crosswalk to support the redevelopment later on. We can't do that unless we have the survey work done in advance. So that's, that's really a core of what we're going to be working with Mass Development on. And then a secondary part of that is to have an appraisal done for each of the three schools. So it's really an essential element for us to have, really to talk about if we want to release the properties for less than the market value, which is very common if we, you know, for example, if we wanted to support affordable housing as a goal, we would offer, we may offer the properties at a reduced, a reduced rate. And we can't do that without having the appraisal done first. So that's kind of the real detailed information about what we're looking to do with Mass Development. And before we get into the actual memorandum of agreement, one thing I just wanted to say was we've been envisioning this for well over a year. We applied for a grant. We applied for $100,000 to do these two pieces plus a whole bunch of other due diligence. The, the state put forth a one stop for growth program, which is just basically a consolidation of all their grant programs. And so we applied for that and we were not awarded, but thankfully, Mass Development came back to us and said they still wanted to work with us. And we met with Claire and Ben and a couple other folks to kind of narrow down sort of the most important things that we wanted to have done all in an effort to make this information publicly available before we release the RFP. So the, the end goal is that this information will be available for developers who are going to look at the buildings to basically reduce the questions. Because all, any kind of question that a developer has at the end of the day is a cost that they'll kind of pack into their, any proposal or their, the way that they look at the schools. So we want to eliminate as many questions as we could. So, you know, I think, I think that's a, I think that's my general summary. And I, I think what would help me and often these subcommittee meetings help me, you know, with your questions. So we can hone in on any discussion because of the full meeting, Councillor Krasinski, if I'm not mistaken, is tomorrow night. So I will stop talking for a minute, see if there's questions. If you have questions about the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, I think the, you know, that's why Ben and Claire are here. I guess the last thing is that, kind of going on the valuation and maybe Claire or Ben can, can confirm this. But you know, right now, there's no financial obligation of the city. Because we're moving forward in good faith with Mass Development that we're going to release these for a certain purpose. And if, if the city does not generate revenue from this, from the school reuse process, then Mass Development will have provided this information as a service. And that's a huge value to the city. So like if we are able to get all this information done that prepares us to release the schools and we select a developer, we're not necessarily expecting a big profit. What we're expecting is the schools to become something that will last another 100 years. And that's kind of the, one of the real benefits of working with Mass Development is that they've done this before for other municipalities and they're, they're kind of in this business of bridging the gap between a municipality and a private developer to give this support. So with that, I will stop talking and answer any questions the best I can.
There aren't any immediate questions from the councillors. Is it possible to pull up your version? Jeff?
You said pull up the version of the?
Any, your version of, of, of the information.
Sure. Yeah. So I think I will need, with the ability to share my screen to do that. But yes, I see Councillor Zarrett has a question, but I'll pull that up now.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Jeff, for introducing that. And thank you, Mass Development, for stepping up and helping us out with this critical project to our, our city's development. I just, I just want to make sure I understand the, the MOU correctly. So Mass Development's basically making a donation in kind valued at $65,000 to perform all of these due diligence items, including an appraisal. And then if the buildings sell and they sell in excess of that appraisal and the city actually makes money off of it, we're obligated to, to repay based on those, the, our, our proceedings up to that value. But then also in addition to that, if we choose to try to repay those funds early, such as within a year, we only have to repay 25% and if it's been three years, is only 50% of my reading that correctly? It's kind of like, it seems like a pretty sweet deal to me.
Yeah, it is. I'm Ben Murphy with Mass Development Real Estate Services. I'm the project manager for this. And it is, there's an incentive to, if the city wanted to pay back early, there's an incentive to, to pay back early and there's a discounted schedule in the, the agreement. So you're reading that correctly.
The one thing I'd like to add, and good evening, this is Claire O'Neill. I'm Senior Vice President of Real Estate Planning with Mass Development. Ben is part of my team and it's been a pleasure to get to know Jeff and, and the mayor and, and really see these, these buildings that you're trying to repurpose. The, it, it's really only if there are net proceeds from the sale. So, you know, not only would you have to sell the, the, the buildings or the properties for a price, but then you would be able to demonstrate to us, we have X number of costs associated with this project. And those costs would come off of the, the net value of the money that you've, you've sold the properties for. So, you know, it, it, it could well be that, you know, we, we, there isn't a repayment. We're, we, if, if you sell the properties and make some money, then we hope to, you know, we hope to share in, in your success and be able to provide the service to some, to another community. And that's, that's really how we operate.
And generally speaking, we're hoping that these projects, there'll, there'll be a community benefit in the end. And so we're not, we want, we are, we want to see that happen. This, the, the community benefits from, from these surplus properties being redeveloped.
Thank you.
Councillor Gomans? Councillor Gomans?
Yes, I don't have any particular question. I think as this makes sense. Not to, to do the same in the past with, with all the buildings that we have. And, and then we found so many stuff. These three buildings are strategy, it's for your places in, in our city. And I think having all this information to understand the conditions of, of the properties, not just the building per se. Because I'm listening, it's going to be the sidewalks, it's going to be the, the lots lined. So I, I think to me makes totally sense.
Could I add something, Councillor Krasinski? Is that okay?
Please do.
You know, I think this is really good timing. I mean, I'm appreciative that Mass Development reached back out to us. I mean, we've been really, we, we do have to look back quite a ways. You know, starting in 2018, we had been granted a, a planning assistance grant through the, through the state. And that allowed us to do our downtown strategic plan. And really that kind of set up the vision. We got the community input and this is all still building off of that. After we did the strategic plan, we actually applied again to that same program, the planning assistance program. And that's, that's what's funding our other work with the RFP and the reuse committee. So we are working with a consultant who is familiar with Mass Development in terms of like kind of facilitating our, the creation of the RFP. And so, you know, that's ongoing. And what we're starting to do is run a couple, multiple parallel paths. Kind of all geared towards being as, as prepared as possible for, for the reuse of the schools. And so this is kind of just adding into that mix. So we have the RFP, which is, has a working group formed that will come, that will come to city council. It will get sent to a subcommittee. The city council will review that RFP. And then, you know, that'll be the process before which we release the RFP. And this is, this is going to be information that, you know, it may not be that important for you or I, but for a developer who would be looking at these properties, having this baseline information is kind of really critical. And we're gathering more. So when, when the school building committee was going through the process of evaluating the three elementary schools, they did kind of a deep dive in Maple Street. That was kind of the one that they evaluated for its condition and ability to expand. And then they did that for, they did a, a little less deep dive for Center Pepin. So all of that information is also going to be available for the RFP and for developers to look at. So it has floor plans, information about the school and the general condition. So the idea is that the more information that we can put together and make available when we release the RFP, it's going to put, it, it should put the city in a, in a good position to have developers that don't have to guess as much about a lot of, a lot of parts. So, you know, I'm, I am realizing that this is the first time that the city council is kind of seeing something about the schools. But I think our program is kind of, so that in April or May is when we hope to be sending the RFP. We have to take some votes. So there's some votes with school committee and city council. And then there's a RFP review by city council. Our general goal is to release an RFP before the summer. And so this information will all feed into that RFP release. And I would be remiss to, to not suggest that there's, there's value added with Mass Development that we should hopefully see again in the future, which is, my example is if you walk around Maple Street School on the sidewalks, there are, they're in poor condition. There's areas that have crosswalks that lead to a curb and that are not ADA compliant. And so we would expect that there would be the need for infrastructure improvements around the schools, public infrastructure that we would need to be, the city would need to be at the table, working hard to get those public infrastructure parts upgraded. And what we're looking at is that if we can get the survey work in the future, when there's a developer who's chosen for whatever the three school properties, we can then go back to Mass Development and they can help us prepare kind of design plans for new crosswalks, sidewalks. If there's, you know, places where we can put on-street parking. And that, those 25% drawings that would come later would make us eligible to apply for things like Mass Works. So like the same funding sources that we had behind the mills and for Ferry Street. So we see this on a continuum where the existing conditions information is really important for the developer. And then, you know, if we're successful in getting developers to, to pick, to choose to, you know, work in East Hampton, then we can continue to work with Mass Development to, to build out these changes that will need, the changes that will need accompany the school. So the relationship that we want to build with Mass Development is, is kind of the long term. And this is really the first step. So, sorry, I apologize that's long-winded. I don't need to be that long-winded tomorrow. But I wanted to kind of just give you guys that full picture that this is the first time I think the city has worked with Mass Development. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to be doing that. So we're happy.
If there's a place to, to be long-winded or longer-winded, it would be here. So we appreciate this, the discussion here and try to be brief at, at the council level. Although we do want to cover the deep, as many details as are appropriate. And it sounds like the infrastructure, having, what is the cities, what is the city's infrastructure is all important to proceed with. And I would expect that any developer would have their own team that would then be doing their own due diligence as they evaluate the project and would maybe look over what we had to be sure that that work was done correctly. Because those are all costs that they will incur should they become the winning bidder. Councillor Zarrett?
Just a quick question. Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. I think I know the answer to this, but so the planner, Mr. Planner, you, you mentioned things like crosswalks before. So I know there's been discussion in the past, certainly in Making School Street One Way. And I know that there's been some stuff thrown out there about playing around with traffic patterns around the Cottage Street corridor and Chapel Street. I, my understanding, this, this is more of an audit, inventory and appraisal. There's no, there wouldn't be any attached infrastructure recommendations that would come with this, but there, such as, such as changing the flow of streets or anything like that.
Yeah, not in this initial round. And some, some of that consideration might come later when there's a developer who proposes a project. But I would say that in terms of Cottage Street, your, your mention of Cottage Street had that, had that discussion. I, you know, we go back to that strategic plan and, you know, there's, there's a lot of people who suggest alternative traffic routes. But the summary version of that was that it's very complicated because 141 is the main thoroughfare through East Hampton. So to create a, you know, I think, I'll just finish that thought, but to create a, a one-way circular route had a lot of challenges with trucks and the number of vehicle trips that go through there. So the, the, the little bit easier thing to tackle with School Street, so that's the one, no, I think it's Chapel Street, sorry. Chapel Street is the one in front of Maple. I think the, the more logical, the more likely scenario we would see is could we formalize on-street parking in front of Maple Street? Because that's kind of the pattern now. But there's sidewalks and crosswalks that are not ADA compliant. So those are the kinds of things that we're thinking about with the future steps, more so than the, the complete overhaul of the neighborhood. But the pattern that we are seeing, and this is kind of relevant, like we're doing Union Street, right? So one of the reasons why we're pushing for this, especially around Maple Street is the DBW director has questions about the condition of the underground infrastructure. And I think, you know, the Councillor Krasinski's question like, if we don't do this evaluation, they'll, they'll ask us for record plans and information about what the city has. And unfortunately, the city is, is, is kind of data poor in that regard. And so we'd rather not answer with, we don't know, because we're concerned that that would be worse than here's the condition, the known condition, and then saying that the city will be working hard to support upgrade of sewer and water, if that's the case. So, sorry, the Union Street analogy is that if we know there might be some deficiencies in the sewer underground, we want to fix that. And then when we're at the top coat, we want to be fixing sidewalks and things like that at the same time. So we, we don't want to get in a situation where a developer comes in and we want to fix some sidewalks and then realize that the underground is, is not in good shape. So we want to try to tackle it kind of in a, in a cohesive way. And this is the pattern that we are seeing, you know, this is the pattern that other communities have followed. And this is the pattern that we have kind of seen with Ferry Street is that if we can get to be at the table with the state and getting funding for infrastructure upgrades, it will help support the creation of whatever we're going to see at the schools. And so we're just trying to be as prepared as possible with those.
Jeff, if you could just reassure me, in the discussions with the DPW director, we had just, as I recall, spent a million dollars in analyzing our infrastructure running. I had understood that we had run cameras through much of the sewer systems and the water systems. And I would have presumed that they would have looked at Maple Street as part of that inventory. Do you know anything about that? And could you be sure and reach out if, to the folks in charge of that study? There were consultants that DPW had, and I thought it was like six or 800 page report. And maybe that we have some information, more information than people even know about right now.
I think that, yes, I can speak to that real quick and I'll, I'll confirm with Greg. But my understanding and talking to Greg about this is that you're referring to the Integrated Wastewater Treatment Plan, the Integrated Water Plan.
That's the plan.
Unfortunately, that, that plan did not inventory the entire city. So there are pockets that were not evaluated. So even though it's kind of mind boggling that we have such infrastructure problems, Maple Street was not included. Nor was the other project that we have ongoing that's similar is in the New City Neighborhood over by Parsons Street. So we have blocks and blocks of streets that were not included in the, in that evaluation. So we're, we're doing that evaluation with community development block grant funds. It's kind of with the same idea. First, we will evaluate, come up with the priority areas for improvement. So we're focused on New City with that. This funding will eventually allow us to look at Maple Street and around Center Pepin, both areas of which were not included in the IW RMP. So despite that plan's like comprehensiveness, it didn't include the whole city. So we're trying to, as we go, we're trying to fill the gaps with these various other funding sources.
Thank you. With regard to land surveys, obviously, if we're talking about buildings that are at or over 100 years old, surveys just weren't really prevalent oftentimes when the deeds were created. They may have been developed afterwards or any land surveys. So that, that in itself, I think is important to do. I am appreciative that we have the expertise from Mass Development. I, I know you've done lots of projects. Is there just maybe a, a few moments synopsis you could give us that might be helpful to anyone who may be listening about what you foresee, having taken a quick look at the buildings? I don't know if it would be Ben or Claire, either one.
Are you, are you asking a kind of prediction of what type of development would be attracted to these types of properties?
If, if you had a three or four minutes synopsis about your contributions to this process and how?
Sure. In general, I think it's, first of all, I think it's important to understand that. So we're providing services. We're not providing funding to the city. So we're, we're hiring consultants essentially that will be doing the work that Jeff described. And I think we have, we have a lead consultant that, that will, will hire some subs for, for the work and, and get that done. And when it comes to development, I, I know the mayor's interested in low-income housing, subsidized housing and identified that as a need in the city. There are certainly plenty of examples of, of old school buildings being converted to, to, into housing. But that's certainly not. Um, but that's certainly not something that we think it needs to have. You know, it could be new, new construction too. I'm not sure if anybody will come with new construction, because that's also very expensive. Um, rest restoring historic buildings and new construction are both expensive and and each have their own complications that go with them. Um, I I I have a historic preservation background myself, so I I do like historic buildings and and they're very, they're lovely, they're lovely buildings. Um, I think it'd be great if they're preserved, but I I think the the bigger picture is what's, what's best for East Hampton going forward? What's the community benefit that works best for the community? I'm not sure if that answered your question or not.
I think it helps to set some of the framework. And we've done lots of of community planning and thinking. And I know we have the School Reuse Committee that is currently doing uh undergoing a study. I I had a conversation with the chair of that committee today. So I think we're all on the right track, putting our heads together on this. I really don't have any further questions. Uh, Claire, did you have something you wanted to add? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. I did what, just wanted to add one thing, and that was really to commend the city on moving forward very quickly with the um, with with this process. Because I I've spent a good amount of the past ten years working on the redevelopment of the Belchertown State School and the redevelopment of the Norton State Hospital. And obviously, those were substantial institutional buildings that decayed over time and
I'm sorry, I I have to laugh because I know how long those projects were in the making. You could make two careers probably on that, on that one. I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. It's just I had to.
No, I'm, I'm, it's good, it's good to hear your appreciation for for those types of projects. Um, so I I just want to commend the city on taking this, this, um, you know, very positive steps to either redevelop those properties or to see them move into the the private sector for a reuse, which is um in keeping with your master plans and in keeping with the needs of the community. Um, so, you know, congratulations, because you don't want to be dealing with, with buildings that need to be boarded up and and deteriorate sadly over time.
That, that, that's for sure. Uh, well, I think that the the schools will, Jeff, do you know how much longer the schools will be in use? Uh, I had thought that this would be through the rest of the school year. Uh,
They will be, yeah, the elementary schools are in use until June. Um, you know, it's, it's definitely, so, you know, it's separate from this discussion. But yeah, I think um what we're going to be trying to do is have the school committee and city council take votes, um, understanding that we have a, there's a schedule. So, you know, there's a date coming up by which uh Mountain View is substantially complete. And so as soon as Mountain View is deemed substantially complete, we want to have um the city start taking these votes to, to, you know, um, I guess, release, I would say. And then that is going to open up the opportunity to let the RFP out. Because we, what we're trying to do, and it's to Claire's point, is we, we're, we want to try really hard to um uh reduce the amount of time that those buildings are empty and vacant, because the city will be paying to heat them and maintain them um and keep them in good repair. And and the the quicker we can um change ownership or take, change responsibility for the schools, um, the better in the long run. So we're trying, we're going to be coming to city council. My expectation, my hope is sometime in April to take the vote that is necessary for, to allow us to release the RFP. At the same time, city council has to see the RFP. Um, and that's when, you know, we would talk about what um, the goals of the community are, whether that's affordable housing or historic preservation and that kind of thing. So that's when the city council talks about those. And that's been our, uh, you know, I've been working on this like almost every single day since two thousand and eighteen. So since, since the day that we knew this was going to be the
Just, just, just beginning, right, right, Claire?
No, the debt exclusion override, you know, happened in in May. And um, we had started before that, and we were, we're trying to be, that's all of those days to be ready for like this, this timeframe that we're in now. You know, we don't want to be, we don't want to wait until June thirtieth um to start this. So we're
I think we're, I think we're in good, we're in good position and the planning process is going very well. I think it's an exciting project, because I'm not sure there are many communities out there that can take the kind of infrastructure we're talking about. The three separate sites all at the same time for development uh in 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 the different locations and offer them presumably to one developer or to three developers. I'm not sure how that will all break out, but those are all possibilities. Uh, the various types of uses, there's lots to to discuss and wrap up. I just wanted to be sure that we we timed this right with regard to finishing up the the school year. And I would imagine that the school department wouldn't declare anything surplus until the students actually had closed the build, had had left the building for that time. So, uh, but we can do our planning and take our our other votes. With that being said, uh, any councillors have anything else to ask this evening? If not, I would consider a motion regarding the authorization of the mayor to opt for for the council to authorize the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Mass Development for purposes of reuse of the uh three city schools.
So move.
Second.
With the, any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor? Councillor Gomez?
Aye.
Councillor Zara?
Yes.
Councillor Kuzinski, aye. I thank you for uh for being here. I don't know if Ben or Claire, either of you might be available or someone else uh for the next meeting, uh, that would be discussed tomorrow night. Councillor Gomez?
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I have a question to Jeff.
We're not on the uh, on the agenda for tomorrow.
If it is, uh, do we need an emotion, particular motion for this or for tomorrow's meeting?
I, yes, I think Barbara had asked me, the city clerk had asked for a motion, and I think we can put one together. It's, it's pretty straightforward, because it's, the motion really is to authorize the mayor to enter into this memorandum of understanding with Mass Development. I mean, I think it's, it's along those lines. So um, we, I I can put that together and run it by Barbara and then get it to you tomorrow.
To me and to JP.
Yes, yep, sorry, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, that would be good to have. And procedurally, it would be up to councillor Gomez, Chair of Gomez, uh, as to whether or not we brought the matter up for silent vote. And I would imagine that the councillor could object since this had been proposed.
I I I think we're going to be ready for to voting for tomorrow.
Good.
Um, uh, by the way, I'm expecting to vote tomorrow, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you all for being here. Uh, I would be, obtain a motion to adjourn this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No discussion, all in favor? Gomez?
Aye.
Zara?
Yes.
Kuzinski, aye.
Thank you, Ben and Claire, being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.